Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have Reverend Dan Phillips here with us today? Say the invocation.
Nope, he's not here. I know him, and he is not here. Wait, let's see if that's coming. I'll do it, okay?
Thank you very much.
Yep, let's pray together. Well, Lord, we thank you so much for today and this opportunity to serve on behalf of the Board and the public here in Putnam County. Father, I pray you be with us as we deliberate issues that impact our students. And, Father, we do pray that you would bless the families of our district. And, Father, may we lean on your wisdom. In your name we pray, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Okay, are there any more green cards coming for members of the public who would like to address the Board? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. With that, we are going to start the public comment part of our meeting. And the first up is Pamela Perry, please. I will advise the public that there's a policy we allow three minutes for public comment for each person. So if Pamela Perry would please come up here and address the Board. Right over there, there's kind of a cubby hole.
Hi. And I, girl.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Pamela Perry. My address is 220 Rose Trail, Interlochen. I'm here today because I need to make a request from you, but first I need to give you a little bit of background and why I'm making the request. I'm a very strong proponent for exposing our students to the entire election process and feel that exposing students to this process makes them good citizens who will actually go out and vote once they reach voting age. Unfortunately, as a public body, the school board and the school personnel must be very, very careful not to provide the appearance of favoritism for one candidate or one political party. During the election season last fall, a couple of incidents occurred that caused me and many others in the county some concern. I saw on the front page of the Placa Daily News that the superintendent took three students to the campaign event held at Beefo Brady's for Governor Scott. At the event, the superintendent had the students present the governor with an award for his dedication to education. I then saw, in later editions of the paper, stories that the students, who were band members, I believe, were brought to the campaign events for Attorney General Pam Bondi and CFO Jeff Atwater, both state positions. While I didn't attend these particular three events, I did attend multiple nonpartisan campaign forums that were held throughout the county prior to the election. I did not see the superintendent nor the student representative as present at any of these forums. My concerns are several. First is the fact that the students were only taken to a GOP candidate event. Excuse me. The students would have learned more about the election process and heard from many more candidates, including some of those running for school board, if they would have attended the local forums. The students would have heard about local issues and concerns that the local, excuse me, and concerns the local citizens had, as well as the positions for each one of the candidates. Second, the fact that the superintendent had the students present the governor with an award at a GOP-sponsored campaign function gave the impression that the superintendent and the school board were supporting the governor and his reelection bid. I know that was not the intent, but it led to an impression of that. If it would have been presented by the students at a non-election-related event, such as a park dedication or the governor just visiting the schools, that would have been a much better venue for such an award presentation. As it was done, it led to the appearance of them endorsing a candidate, which is unethical and against school board policy, I do believe. I'm here today to ask the Board to consider establishing some sort of policy that addresses student participation at political activities. This policy can be provided to future superintendents and board members so that incidents like the ones I've described don't happen again. I am not aware of any type of guideline or protocol you may already have in place that will address this specific issue. If there are guidelines in place for this, I would like for you to share that information with the public. Again, getting students involved in the election process is a good thing. I am asking that you make sure that it's done in a way that fosters inclusion and freedom of choice for the students. And I do thank you for allowing me to speak today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna see about our policy. I'm gonna see if I can find anything in policy that relates to this, and if not...
Here's the only thing I found.
Go back to the microphone, please.
Twelve, I'll give you this, it's 1232 political activities, but it only addresses the school board members themselves and using...
Facilities?
Facilities. It doesn't actually address using the students as a background.
Pam, you're gonna have to, I mean, I saw quite a few students at those events that will use that on their resume to get accepted into college, and these are not the first candidates, Democrat or Republican, that children have attended in Putnam County.
I don't have a problem with it. It was the way it was done, and it was only done as...
You probably need to be back over here, but I just...
Like I said, I don't have a problem with them attending it.
Anytime a governor or a state senator or whoever is in power in Tallahassee comes to town, that is an extremely important learning experience and an opportunity for young people to state how they feel.
But my point, I understand your point, and I agree with you, except for the fact that they weren't taken to any of the other events, which would have been much more beneficial to them in a learning process.
They have, over the, in past years, Dottie Blackwell, who used to be at Interlochen High School, sponsored mock elections at Interlochen High School. And they would run for different public offices, but to involve our children in local elections where Uncle Bob's running and Aunt So-and-so's running or people they know, it's, local politics is a kind of a hard thing for them to be involved in.
Well, to me, it's worse to do it for one party.
Oh, so if it, well, no Democrat I know came to town, did they?
Yes, yes, sir, they did. There was a federal official that came to town, Ms. Brown, and I didn't see anybody there from the school board.
We weren't invited. We were invited to this, and all of the students had permission to be there. And we brought only student council members.
I'm not chastising, okay, I don't want you to think that I'm chastising. I'm just saying that it lends the air of being unethical, and I strongly, I strongly, strongly...
Well, I tell you what, we just won't take them to anything anymore.
No, that's not...
What I'm asking, what I'm asking is for you to consider it. I'm not saying, I'm not criticizing what was done. I'm just asking you to think about what was done and the way it was done, and see if you can come up with a better plan.
Corinne Brown has always been a good friend of ours.
I would suggest that you work this out with maybe the superintendent of elections and, you know, work with his office and get those things going and do them through him. That way, you're totally out of it.
Okay, I'm gonna move on. I will review policy with our attorney. I'll speak to the supervisor of elections and the superintendent. I will do that. And then, if the superintendent agrees, the Board will look at it also. Okay, moving right along. Thank you very much. By the way, it's always hard to come up before a Board like this, and I appreciate all those who have the courage. Jan Carnes?
Can I let James go?
With an S.
Hi, I'm Jan Carnes. I'm from Hanley Center Foundation at 954th Street, West Palm Beach, Florida, 33407. I'm here today to talk about some, a funding opportunity that's coming down. The block grant dollars that transfer from the federal government to the state through the Department of Children and Families. Those dollars for prevention services are in a RFP, a Request for Proposals that is due on the 20th of this month. And there are an opportunity to bring dollars through that organization to the community to do prevention-related services. So we are proposing and we work with the coalition. This is Christopher Gleb. Do you all know Christopher?
Yes.
Good to see everyone today.
So we work with the local coalition to determine what the needs are. One of the things we look at, and we still know in the state of Florida, and especially in Putnam County, is that the number-one issue is still underage drinking. So our proposal would be to bring a program that's been certified and been tested so that we know that the dollars and the time that we're spending with these students will be effective in reducing underage drinking and binge drinking, which is especially high here in Putnam County, at 18 percent of students reporting in the last 30 days they've been binge drinking, which is five or more drinks at a sitting. So we would like to, we'd like to write this grant, and we need your blessing and support in order to bring that here. It's one of the requirements that the grant has, so that's why I'm here today. I did send everyone a package on email, and I brought you a package today so that you can look at that. It talks about the program, the research, and those kinds of things. So what questions would you have?
Well, from what I understood when I read this over, it's not any kind of a financial obligation that the district is taking on. It's just a partnering.
That is correct.
So that you can work with us, with students that need this. Unfortunately, this is not on the agenda as an action item, but fortunately, our next meeting is the 17th. So we will be able to put it on for approval at that point.
Okay, great.
Okay, and we won't need a presentation.
Okay.
If any of the Board members have any questions or problems with this, please get in touch with Ms. Hanley. Otherwise, it'll be on the consent agenda.
I'd like to ask the superintendent to give us a recommendation.
It says a 90-minute classroom-based program, and we'd need, I would need information on what schools, what classrooms, you know, we'd have to make accommodations. There would be things we'd have to know, and I just, I need to know about all of that.
Absolutely, and I can tell you that in the short timeframe we have to put you to the grant, we're not gonna have all those answers. But we have worked here before in the community with, we did write this prevention partnership grant in the 2009 and had a three-year grant here in the community. And so at that time, what we did is work with the individual schools to find out, how can we meet the most students in the least disruptive way? And at the time, we were doing a program called Project Northland, which was six to eight sessions, which is very difficult in the classroom. So we've been working with the developer of this particular program to make sure we have an effective program that can be done in a shorter period of time so that we can have good outcomes without interrupting the class. We understand that classroom time is priority and critical. But we also know that if we can reduce underage drinking and binge drinking, we will increase children being at school and participating in school and obviously graduating. So that answer, I'm not gonna have for you right away. We're just gonna have to work with those individual schools.
What age level?
We're looking at high school, middle school, and also some of the college level, because this program runs from fifth grade through college. Not that we necessarily have to hit all of those, but we are probably gonna focus more on middle, late middle, and high school, because that's where the problem seems to be the biggest.
Kind of like a SWAT, but it's with alcohol.
Well, it's, the program is great, because it's really about media literacy. So it really teaches the children that it's the thinking, not the drinking, that gives them the desired effect. And so we really change their thinking. We look at, you know, advertisements where they're really, they're really, advertisements are really geared towards these kids. We know, because 25 percent of the dollars made from drinking come from underage drinkers. So it's a big market for the alcohol company to have those kids already in the loop with their brands. So, yes, this really looks at those things and has great outcomes.
I just would ask that you do get with the superintendent and let her recommend to make sure that we fit in the curriculum timelines to meet our academic needs along with this important need.
Absolutely, and we work in many counties around the state, and that is always our priority, to work with the schools. We're not, we're not trying to force this anywhere. If we have a school that says, well, you can work with these 200 students, we'll work with those 200. Some schools will say, we want all of our students to have it, we'll work with those. So we try to accommodate based on what the needs are for the school.
It's kind of after the fact, when you bring a wrecked car on a campus where students have been killed and try to tell them it would be better to work from the beginning.
Exactly, and that's great. I love that, because, you know, if we could just do that, we wouldn't have drinking and driving. If we could just say, oh, look what happens when you drink and drive.
We've done that, but it's, you know...
We need to be proactive and not reactive.
We used to do a lot of that. I did.
Right. In strategies, what we're looking at here is how many kids are not drinking and how we get that message out, as opposed to those kids that are drinking. So that's kind of the focus.
Well, I'm not, and, you know, I don't think the Board would be adverse unless laws have changed where you couldn't have a wrecked vehicle. A lot of times, parents make them available to take around to local schools and show people, so. That's something to think about. Ms. Chriswell, we'll look forward to hearing your report.
Right, if you all have any questions, you have my number. Feel free to call, email, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. Carrie Cribs, please.
Hey.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Carrie Cribs, 114 West Venterover Street, Florhome, Florida. And I'm here about the school hours. Again, I just wanted to show y'all how dedicated we are, how strongly we feel about these school hours being changed. I thank you, Ms. Kathy and Ms. Cummings, for replying back to me on emails. I'm sure y'all have got a lot of phone calls about this. There's a lot of parents that cannot be at a 3:30 meeting, but we do have some. And I just wanted to stress to y'all how, I know that there's middle school and high school and older kids than mine are, but my kid hates school. He has to be there more than an average adult has to be there for a workday. Now, this is a six-year-old kid, ADHD plus homework. That's a lot. So I really want y'all to be for this. And I'm just gonna have the parents that came to support this to stand up, because there's no sense in y'all hearing them repeat the same thing as I did.
Well, we sure appreciate that part. Thank you very much. And thank you for coming to show your report. And I can tell you, this has been brought to the Board's attention, phone calls, et cetera. The superintendent is aware of it as well. I don't know that we'll need to workshop it, but I do believe that the superintendent and her staff are looking into whether or not we can change this, if nothing else, for the elementary schools, because those seem to be the calls we're getting for the young ones, the little ones. So I will be back in touch with you and make sure the ball keeps rolling.
Okay, yeah, I understand that Ms. Chriswell said that there was a poll done. I've talked to a bunch of parents that 80 percent, there's a poll, you did 80 percent something for time change last time. It's recorded. None of us parents knew what poll you're talking about. We are the ones that you need to get approval by.
I don't remember doing a poll.
You said that y'all did a poll.
On, for, I think that was not for the time change. That was for the week of spring break.
Yeah, right.
We didn't do anything on the...
Also, we did time change, not time addition. We did a poll about changing the time.
Not adding time, but changing the time.
And we never got anything about the extending of the time either.
We didn't do anything on that, no.
Two different polls about time.
The state of Florida tells us that time on task is the one thing that increases student achievement and their ability to learn. So it is something that we did at the suggestion of the Department of Education.
So I don't know how...
The less time they have.
Doing more time.
And honestly, I was very surprised, because a lot of parents complained that after school, they have to find after-school care till they get off. And so I really thought this would alleviate parents trying to find after-school care and that it would actually save parents money. And it's worked really well in the middle and the high school. The high schools especially, they're really enjoying it. So we're looking at it. We've heard a few complaints. We haven't heard many, but we've heard a few, and we are looking at it.
Okay, well, their, what their care is before and after school is not school board. That's the ECF. I just wanted to let you know that we're for this timing change.
Well, I have some others that tell me every time they see me there for the time being changed.
Yes, and this is not just West Putnam. This is not just Melrose. This goes all the way to Pomona Park, Crescent City, all the way. I've talked to you, Kathy, about it. It goes all the way over. So we're definitely for it, and I thank y'all for hearing me.
Thank you very much for coming and having the courage to get up here and stand up for the parents. And I will follow up on it, like I said, Carrie. Thank you very much. I have your email, so I'll get back to you that way if I need to. Okay, moving right along. That's the end of our public comment guide. And again, I thank those of you who came and spoke to us for doing so. We're up to the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to pull any items for discussion before we vote on the consent agenda? Yes, sir. Is it on the consent agenda?
Didn't fill out a card.
You needed to fill out a card. Can you come up here for a second, so we can, for a moment, so we can talk? And then, thank you very much. What's the subject?
The subject is, I want to have permission from the school board to put a flawed power right hold by Jenkins Middle School.
Okay, you're gonna see the gentleman in the white shirt, and he's gonna take care of getting it on the agenda and doing everything that needs to be done. Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else from the public that wants to remove something from the consent agenda? Board members, Mr. Wright?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Crawford?
No.
Ms. Cummings?
No.
Mr. Buckles? I have nothing either, so I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Okay, I would like to point out to the Board members that we gotta revise expulsion. The results of the expulsion hearing was revised. The committee did decide to go outside the recommendations, so as long as we're all aware of that. There's a motion in second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Moving right along. We have emergency items. So I'm taking us out of regular session and into emergency session. See if I can find it. We just have one emergency item. Approval of an overnight trip for QI Roberts Junior/Senior High FFA. And the justification is that it's time-sensitive. They'll be leaving before our next board meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the overnight trip, QI Roberts Junior and Senior High FFA.
Second.
The motion in second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Carries five zero. We're out of emergency session and back into regular session now. And... There's no old business, so we have discussion of new business. I asked this be put on the agenda after last week's, last month, last meeting. It was last month, but it was two weeks ago. And we had the presentation by the Crescent City Junior High School Band. This is my idea, and, you know, it's a three-two vote ultimately, or a four-one, or a five-zero. This is just my idea. But I think if the Board wanted to, we could do a $30,000 allocation out of next year's budget. $10,000 to each high school band. And the reason I think we can do this without having all the other people come to us is because it's accredited course. Band is academia. Football and soccer and all the others aren't. They're extracurricular. That would be my justification. I know that the Board has its own budget. I'm not gonna mention the figure, but at the beginning of the year, it's very, very, very large. I would imagine there's money there, or ultimately, the Board can just direct the Director of Finance to do anything we want with the money. We have to pay salaries. But that loose money, I mean, we really can't. It's an idea. It's up for approval, but we don't have to approve anything today. As a matter of fact, we are scheduling workshops with Rhonda so that we can... The first one will be kind of a State of the Union where we're at. And then, as we get closer to the end of the year, she will meet with us about the budgeting process. And at that time, we, as a Board, can direct her to do anything we want. But again, it's as a Board. This was my idea. I just wanted to throw it out there and see if anybody has anything brilliant to say, except you, David. Because I can see the wheels started while I'm getting a moment.
Madam Chair, a couple of things. Would you, is your idea for this to be reoccurring or a one-time?
One time, and clearly understood, one time, and only to the bands. That this is my, again, my thought process. Very clearly understood, it's a one-time help-out, because our bands are all doing so well. High school bands only. They all get the same amount, even though Placa High School's gonna yell, but Placa High School gets more than the other two anyway. Most, they do. Right, Nikki? But anyway, that's just my idea. We can do whatever the majority of us agree to do. And again, it doesn't, you know, I'll entertain a motion, but we don't have to approve it, whatever.
Well, I, just a question. I think the presentation that was last time dealt, from the Crescent City folks, dealt specifically with uniforms, and there seemed to be a time-sensitive issue there. Am I right or wrong on that? I don't, I mean...
You were right, but you were right to the point that they could possibly raise a portion of that money.
So why did we decide they're gonna come back to us? Is that what, is that what we had said?
That's what I thought we said.
Well, she said she had until the weekend.
You were involved. I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna come back to us.
They've already got several fundraisers planned. We got emails about their concert, $10 tickets. I've asked for them so I can sell them. I don't wanna sit here and say, oh, let's allocate all this money right now when we can take care of the problem if we're proactive right now. I just feel like I'm absolutely against that right now.
If we're proactive, but we're not fundraisers, we're the Board. I personally, I don't get involved in fundraisers, so there's no way I can help the bands. I would like to wait until we meet with Rhonda, just so I can learn more about the budget. Well, that's why I said, I don't think we should approve it this time. We're gonna meet with Rhonda twice before, we're gonna have a general state-of-the-finances as where we are now. And as we get towards the end of the year, when Rhonda knows what the fund balances will be, et cetera, that's when we sit down and get the budget workshop. Okay, but I'm not totally against it, but I'm not gonna vote. That's fine. I don't wanna vote today. Like I said, I didn't really, I probably did ask them to put it on this way, but I didn't intend that. I wanted to give you my idea and bring it up for discussion and give you something to think about. That's all. I know that, again, it's accredited course, and I know that fundraising does go on a lot. As a small business, I get hit up all the time. I can tell you that. So as Chairman of the Board, I wouldn't mind taking some of the taxpayers' money and helping out once. But that's, again, that's me. I will move on to the next item.
Now, wait a minute. Do we need to table that as a point of order, or do we just need?
No.
We have to deal with it somehow, don't we? Discussion input and approval. That's how it's written. We could choose not to action it, so we could choose not to action it.
Yeah, it's for lack of a motion, whatever.
Okay, all right, okay.
So we'll just move on then.
All right.
Discussion input and action on expulsion committee makeup. I asked to have this put on also. Is Travis here, Mr. Weaver? Ah, there he is. He and I had a conversation, and he and I agree or both think or feel that the Board should do the expulsions instead of a committee with one Board member. And I, again, that's what I think. It's three to two, four to one, or five zero. What you all think? So it would be us every time there's an expulsion hearing. Has it ever been that way before? I believe it was, yes. Why did we change?
I was the school superintendent when it changed, because it was too hard to get the Board members there on all occasions, and you had people that were knowledgeable, more knowledgeable than Board members in the procedures that led up to the recommendations. And it, and many other districts were doing it that way, so I felt like it was time for a change, and it was pretty much unanimous.
I'd like to hear from Travis and what he thinks about it.
I'm just restraining the process.
Oh, he'd love to turn it over to the Board.
No, we, our department would still set everything up and set up the meetings. I mean, honestly, you just voted on it. What you just did was the approval for the expulsion committee today. I mean, it comes down to you whether you like it or not.
Only we have no facts.
Right.
We would not know what we're doing.
You just voted on what the committee...
Well, we just, we went along the recommendations of the committee, so that...
Correct.
So y'all meet and discuss and then vote? The committee?
Yes.
I mean, could we do that in place of a workshop, or a...
Jane, have you not sat on the expulsion committee yet?
No, I just started.
Oh, I know, but I didn't know what the rotation, I didn't know where you fell in the rotation.
No.
The conversation that Travis and I had started with, I, as chair, am gonna assume responsibility for getting that board member there, so that he doesn't have to worry about which board member is turned, is it, et cetera, et cetera. In the meantime, during that same conversation, this came up. So I just wanted, I can't talk to you guys about it, except at a meeting, so I put it on the agenda so I could hear what you have to say. It's not that big a deal to me, but...
I, I would say, I would say there's two things, Madam Chair. One, the advantage of, of the committee is you do have people from different disciplines and different areas leveraging their wisdom and experience and background in the process, which is a, um, which is a good thing. The other side of that is, it ultimately comes to us anyway. So we ultimately have to approve that one way or the other. So there's advantages probably both ways.
You're gonna wind up requiring the same people that are on the committee to be there and be away from their normally assigned duties as well. You're gonna have to have the ESE director, you're gonna have to have Student Services, people from the schools. It's, it's, like Terry said, you take a lot of, when you figure that instructional time and that time being spent to listen to us, I mean, they're gonna be making the decisions right now in a committee, but if we do what we're doing and then they come as well, it's, it's just a lot more lost time.
David, they come to the, the principal and the other people who are at expulsion committee hearings, whether it's a committee or it's the board.
They have to be there no matter...
They have to be there no matter what. That's not a good argument.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I don't think the efficiency is there.
Hey, y'all, y'all vote on it, whatever. I thought it was a good idea, but...
Well, how often do we meet, Mr. Weaver?
Well, we've got it set up right now for the, the same day as the board meeting every time, in case we need it. And basically, you're gonna do, I served on that committee for years as an administrator, and you do what the committee does. You become the committee, and you will listen to the, the school's side, and you listen to the student's side, parents if they come, attorneys if they come, whoever comes, and you hear the whole situation and you make a decision about that child. When a student comes to that expulsion committee, it is because the schools have exhausted everything they, and you know, 'cause you've been there, everything they can possibly do with that child. And so now, it's up to the committee, do you expel them, or do you do something else with them, such as Solution Center? And those are the decisions that are made by the committee and then presented to you to vote on, you know, their decision. And we always have a board representative, but it's, it is the department heads that serve on that committee, and they would certainly, the only need that they would have to be, if you're doing it as the committee, is if they have input or have, you know, otherwise, it would be the principal, or the dean, or somebody representing the school that would be there.
Could we appoint a member, a board member by the year?
Yeah, I, I will tell you, Jane, I, I think the, let me, let me just say this. I, I've served on this many times over six years. I've been there a bunch.
Right.
And, and I, and I will tell you that it's the hardest thing we do.
Oh, I'm...
But it's also the most, can be the most rewarding thing you do, because there's some good things that can come out of this. I just personally have found working with other people from the district has added real value to me, because I learn how they think, how they feel, how they process information. But I understand that ultimately, it's the board's decision, which I think is Kathy's point, so why are we asking superintendent staff to come to take up time, right? And then ultimately...
I think that's important.
And ultimately, it has to come before us anyway. I, I get that. I, I can go...
If you were there today, I mean, honestly, again, you just voted on two today.
Right, right. I would just say...
Or today, so...
Right, I know.
If you were there, you would have the input.
Was there somebody from the board that...
I was there, and the input that we received from staff, i.e. the adult ed director, uh, ESE, federal projects, every, Mr. Weaver, the deputy that was, that had to make an arrest, a dean who had their ankle sprained, and, and you know, you...
That part of it's important, though.
They know the information.
Our staff will be there regardless.
Exactly right, just, yeah, FYI, even if the board does it, we're still gonna have to have ESE there, we're still gonna have to have some of these other folks there.
Right, they need to be there.
To represent, so that doesn't, that doesn't change, so...
And the board attorney's there anyway, you know, so...
Well, again, also, we're taking four top administrators and taking up their time with the expulsion committee, that they could be in the middle of, you know, I don't know, in the middle of something.
But they're still gonna be there.
No.
We're gonna sit here and try to make a decision, and you're gonna have to get on the phone and say, can you call and see what the adult ed options are, and what the adoption for getting, what are the options getting in the military?
Why wouldn't they be here for us? If they're here for the committee?
Well, if it's an ESE student, certainly Ms. Weaver would be there. If it's not, she would have no need to be there. Whereas now, she serves on the committee, whether it's ESE or not.
They don't have to be here if we do it.
Well, let me, let me ask this.
Really, it's just a matter of whether the board wants to hear it, or we continue the process as well.
Right.
It's not gonna help with scheduling the meeting. I mean, they're gonna be a nightmare to schedule regardless.
I'm good with, I'm good with whatever, and we could operate with a quorum, so it's not like if you had to be gone, you couldn't be gone.
Exactly. I like to be...
But I would ask the superintendent, what, I mean, what's your thoughts, fellas? I mean, do you have any real feelings on this one way or the other?
Well, I, I think making decisions about children is hard.
Right.
Uh, most of us, all of us who, who are directors or in the positions we're in, they, they don't let the superintendent come. I've offered to be on the committee to help. I did it for years. The, the bottom line is, decisions about children have to be made. Does the board wanna do it, or do they want to let a committee of educators do that and then bring you their decision? Now, personally, I would say, do a couple of them as a board and then make your decision.
That's an excellent idea.
That's a really good idea.
The only, the only reason I'm an advocate for the, the staff is, first of all, it's consistency, and they've done so many expulsions over the last ten, twelve, fourteen years, so they have a lot of experience. But they also are seeing what the current issues are. If it's, say it's, if it's Rodney Simons, the director, he's up here and he's dealing with a bus, I mean, there's issues that are brought to their attention that they would never know with the, unless they were sitting on that. It just makes it more...
I thought you said they would still be here, though, if we had any questions of them.
If it's a bus expulsion, Mr. Simons would be there. If it's an ESE student, Ms. Weaver would be there. She's gonna be there regardless of who the committee is.
For me, it's a better mix for the child when you have, you don't need a superintendent, because the superintendent made the recommendation to expel the child, or to make whatever decision the principal recommended. So you've got that. It's gonna be the committee, which the board ultimately is gonna act on it when it comes to us, but there are so many nuances that can be worked out where a child can benefit, and you can keep them at the school for another couple of days, and they can get in the military, or they can go into ESE, and they can get into Solution Center. The committee is so much more knowledgeable than we would be if we hear students, I'm, I'm just telling you, there are, when I say knowledgeable, there are things that you can do to help children that, as a board, you're not going to know without staff being here, and I can't tell you which staff would be the most important.
But my feeling is, we get this and we, we vote on it, but we haven't heard all this other stuff that...
Well, that's kinda, I'll be honest, that was my thought process as a board. You may want to, since, since it's your decision regardless, you may want to hear it.
I mean, I'm voting on something, I don't even...
But the flip side of the coin...
Reading on that little piece of paper.
The flip side of the coin that Mr. Buckles is bringing up is of value, too, so...
Well, we vote, we vote on the insurance committee, the calendar committee, the, every committee, it comes as a recommendation.
But it's not a child.
That's not expelling a child.
It's not a child.
It's still making decisions based upon what's in the best interest of the kids.
Be a part of it.
Yeah, I'm just saying that if we...
And again, on my end, it's not gonna change a thing in Student Services. What we're gonna have to do is just whether the board wants to sit on it, or if you wanna continue with the committee process.
I like the superintendent's idea, and I think without even a motion or any, anything done by the board, we could try it for a couple of times.
If you did the next two expulsion...
Then we can put it on the...
If you were the committee for the next two expulsions, and then have a discussion about what your feelings were about it, do you feel you need to continue to do it, or can you be comfortable with the committee doing it?
And then at that point, if we're gonna change to the board, there can be a motion. For today, if the board is agreeable...
I'm fine with that.
The next two, Nikki?
Yeah.
The next two, and then we'll talk about it again.
There's only one schedule right now. It's March, March seventeenth at nine o'clock, right here.
Okay, March seventeenth at nine o'clock, and then we'll take the one after that. I'll send out an email and remind everybody.
Cherry.
I know. I accept you, I'll call you then.
Make sure, make sure you call me or something.
Yeah, he doesn't read his email.
Let me, yes, yes, I got somebody taking care of that now.
Somebody.
So let me tell you, Travis, here's, here's the problem, and the only problem is going to be that, that if the board members, you can't sugarcoat it, they're gonna have to hear exactly what happened. This used to be held in a public forum, and they used to do expulsion hearings with the public listening, and they, they used to read it back when your daddy was superintendent, when John Gaines was superintendent, they would read exactly what occurred out in a public hearing for everybody to hear, and it's some very shocking details. So I think the board, if they haven't served on this committee before, would, they need to have it the right way.
I was a high school teacher, David, for thirty-two years. I've heard, heard it all.
Well, I think, no, is it public meeting rather than not we do it? It's a public meeting either way?
No, it's not a public meeting.
It's not a public meeting.
So even if we're the board, it'll be public? It won't be public?
No, it's out of the sunshine.
Before to the attorney. Miss, Miss Hetzner will have to...
It's out of the sunshine?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Yeah, that would be a good reason not for us to do it.
Right, okay. Just clarify.
Okay, so, if it's okay, I'm gonna move along. Mr. Weaver, let me know when you schedule the second one, and I'll get the word around. Thank you so much. Okay, we are now to reports, and I just want to, um, let the board know that starting with the next agenda, before board member reports, we're gonna have order to report, and sometimes she'll get up, as our attorney does sometimes, and say nothing to report, which will be fine. But we're gonna start with that. Board member reports. I will start with you.
Well, I would just like to say how proud I am of the Crescent City Junior Senior High School Boys Basketball Team, making it to the final four. That is such an exciting experience. I've been to, I believe in Dunn Ellen, where was it?
Lakeland.
Lakeland, yeah, Lakeland. I've been to Lakeland for, uh, be- before for the final four in basketball, and it's just the most awesome experience. So we need to, you know, praise the team, the coaches, the teachers, the administration, everyone that supported them in, in their journey to get there. And I was also, I also wanted to mention, I was very disappointed that I wasn't able to be at the send-off for our National Guard unit, um, on Friday, but I, I got to see Kirk's slideshow, and, you know, I'm just so proud of all of our kids that took part in that, from speaking to singing, just being there. And I commend the parents that got their children out of school to take them down there, and the grandparents, because it was such, such a wonderful, wonderful thing that our community did for our soldiers.
Thank you. Ms. Cummings?
I also wanted to, Coach Carter that does the basketball, he is an amazing role model to those kids, and I feel like the, the program is so amazingly successful because of the ability for him to have such high expectations, morals, and the things that he teaches of kids are so much more than just on the court, and I always respect that, and I respect coaches that spend a lot of extra time and energy to go out of their way to make a difference in their lives. So thank you, Coach Carter, and all the staff down there. Also, the send-off was amazing. We had our students that did these wonderful speeches that I was just teared up and just, it was very emotional and very exciting to see some of our past students serving our country, that we can say, wow, that was one of my, I had two students there that I taught in Crescent City, so it was really amazing to see these little kids grow up, and now they're gonna be defending our country. So I was very thankful for John Browning and Ms. Criswell planning that. That was a huge undertaking, and it was very successful with the flyovers and everything, the bands, the, the speeches, the songs, the music. It was awesome. So thank you very much for all the people, the community that came out and really supported. It was, it was just a great event, so thanks again.
Mr. Buckles?
Well, I would first like to start off and give a brief report on meeting with Senators Simpson and Bradley with the superintendent, and one of our representatives from, from Southern Strategies, and it looks like we've got a real good presentation that has taken place in Tallahassee, and we're on the way to hopefully getting some joint funding that will allow us to do the things we've wanted to do with the Career Tech Center. And as we get more information, we have to get it before the session, and the legislative session's just started, so I have, I will let you know as much as I can, but it'll, I'm sure, wait till the governor's veto hammer falls at the end of the session. So I will fill you in then. I can't say enough about the send-off superintendent, and I, I think the world of John Browning, but he didn't do near as much on this as the superintendent did, and, and he watches. John, if you're watching, sorry, you did good, but she, she worked herself to death over this one and did an excellent job. I was never so proud of children as this year that I've watched kids with Pam Bondi, Jeff Atwater, Governor Scott in past years, with Buddy McKay, Lawton Giles, Jeb Bush. Doesn't matter if they're Republican or Democrat, if you've got an opportunity to let children get in front of a, of a, of a state leader and get their pictures taken, and get them the, where they can put that on a resume to get in a college, or to, to go through life, it means a lot, lot to them, and I was so proud of all of our students. They will never forget in the rest of their life, standing there playing for this National Guard unit as those planes flew over, and what occurred the other day. And yes, I did take my grandchildren out of school to go watch the guard send-off, and...
That's what I was saying, it's wonderful.
I thought it was good, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
No, we're talking about...
I hope you didn't think I was criticizing you, I thought it was wonderful.
I'm not taking it personally, I'm glad you feel bad, though, that's good. Not really. But other than that, I, I just, there's no right way on a discipline committee. I've done enough over the years, and I've been, I've been, I've done it every way you can do it, and this, this committee has worked well, but I'm sure the folks that don't sit on the committee would love for the board to hear them, so it'll be fine. Whatever y'all wanna do, I'll, I've done it either way, so...
Whatever we wanna do.
Whatever, whatever we wanna do.
That's it.
Okay, that's it.
You do have a vote.
I do.
We'll give you one. Mr. Wright?
Yeah, a couple of things. Also wanna echo Crescent City's success. Coach Carter is my friend and my neighbor, and I could not be more happy and proud of his work and hard work and his commitment to Crescent City sports for so many years, and there's just not a finer man in our, in our community, and that's a fact. So, so happy for, for Coach Carter and the kids down at Crescent City. It is a big deal, just a few years ago, Plaka High was down there in Lakeland, and it's a real opportunity for our students to go, to experience some things they've never experienced. I was talking to Paula, Coach, Coach's wife, the other day on the phone, and she's like, you know, I think, you know, for many of those kids, that's the biggest arena they'd ever been in. And to be fair, I'd never played in one that big. And I play, it's a pretty big spot, it's a pretty big, pretty big place down there. And so the more we go, the more our kids will get used to it, and, and the less shocking it'll be for them. So looking forward to, to Interlochen going next. That would be the next one that we need to go, so that'd be awesome. The send-off, again, just to echo what everyone said, it was amazing. Phyllis, of course, did a great job, has a heart for our veterans as we do. Her daddy's a veteran, was a veteran, and, and served, and when that's in your family, that matters. You, you don't borrow that, you don't buy that, you, you inherit that in that shape within your life. And it just, it matters, and it flows from a value system. The kids did phenomenal. Want to thank all the teachers, all the principals that allowed their kids the freedom to come. I too checked my children out, and all three of them were there, and, and they loved it, and it was great for them to see. It was, it was great for them to see a community come together like that, so that was awesome. I had a chance to go to Kelly Smith last week. Their third graders did a musical, and I just want to give a big shout-out to Jennifer Raymond, music teacher over there, did a great job. It was wonderful. As I walked on Kelly Smith, of course, my kids went through there, and as you all know, I can't believe they were ever that little, you know? I walked in there, I watched these third graders, and I'm like, well, Carson was a third grader here, and Parker was a third grader here, and that just goes by so quick, but they did such a, such a phenomenal job, to be sure. And looking forward to going to Tallahassee next week, to legislative session, to, to yell and scream and kick and shout about all things educational. Some say it's sort of like kicking a brick wall, but, but every now and then you can, you can chip a block or two. So we're going to go kick the wall anyway, so hopefully we'll have a good report for you when we get back.
Thank you. I would like to report that the resolution that the board passed unanimously last time about Florida, I went to the city commission, I'm going to try and be nice. I went to the city commission meeting and sat there for two hours and 45 minutes until it came up on the agenda. Other things were moved, like from seventh place to third place, we were number five. There were a lot of people there, and they didn't let us talk or present anything, they're going to workshop it. So I hope I never do that to anybody who sat for 42 hours and 45 minutes waiting to get up and say something. If we see a crowd, I will bring, as long as I'm chairman, we're bringing it up right away. If we want to workshop it, we can let them go home. But that was, and it wasn't just me, there were a lot of people, including three physicians, that sat there all that time. Next, we had a workshop today on the Solution Center. And I think everyone here, most everyone knows, that that's our school for students who, for whatever reason, aren't doing well in our traditional middle school or high school setting. They're usually a discipline problem, and they're referred to the Solution Center. And we had the staff come and present to us today, and I just am so amazed and thrilled at what's going on over there for these students. They have brainstormed, brought in outside activities, brought in outside donations. It's, it's really good. I believe that everyone matters. Every student, every adult, everybody on the face of the earth matters. And some of these students have nobody that cares about them, and I can tell you, and I think everybody that was at that workshop will agree, the staff at that school cares about these kids. They have a very, very low absentee rate because the students like to go there. And they're learning, they graduated four high school students out of there in the past couple of years. So it's been a great success, I'm delighted. Big shout-out to the superintendent, to the staff over there. Mary Piazza, who is the principal of E.H. Miller, has also assumed the administrative responsibility for the Solution Center because they're located next to each other, and she's done a great job, too. I just wanted to get that in. And speaking of workshops, our next workshop is on the Sunshine Law. It's not so much for us, because we know the Sunshine Law, but, well, we have a new board member. But we also, so many staff members talk to the board about different issues. And I don't know that they all feel comfortable because they're not sure about the Sunshine Law. And some of them don't want to talk to us at all, because they're, you know, they're, they're hesitant. So I would ask that as many staff members as possible could come to our workshop. It's more of an educational-type thing for the staff. Any board member that wants to come, of course, is welcome. I, the Florida School Board Association sent me a PowerPoint that Mike is going to get set up, that goes through it all. The attorney is reviewing it, and he'll be here, not you, he. The he, attorney. Charlie. Now I remember. Okay, so that's just an announcement. Anybody who's interested, please be here. It'll, it'll be a short workshop at one o'clock, but I think it'll clarify a lot of things for a lot of people. And that's it for me?
I was supposed to give this to someone.
Well, Mr. Buckles, it's now on the agenda? No, it's not, but I will give you the opportunity to present that.
This is a Crystal Star Award for Academic Alternatives to Putnam County District Schools, Palatka, Florida, from 2000, it was in 2004. It was an Award of Excellence in Dropout Recovery Intervention and Prevention from the National Dropout Prevention Network at Clemson University. And Renee Huff was there when they gave this, and the superintendent was cleaning out her office and found it, where it was stuffed in the back of a drawer. Ms. Huff, if you could come get this and put it in here.
Stuffed by you in 2004.
I don't know.
Who stuffed it in the back of the drawer in 2004?
I didn't put it in there. I had it out where you could see it.
You were superintendent.
Renee, if you'll take that and keep it with pride. The missing trophy.
Anything to report, Madam Attorney?
No news is good news. Everything is in order, so I have nothing to report.
That's wonderful.
Yay, I get her time. Okay, I'm going to pass these around. There's two sheets, if you'll just take the one on the top, I think I've got them. What I wanted to do is just give you a, a brief update about testing. The top piece of paper is actually a letter that was sent from the superintendent of Leon County to the Commissioner of Education about all the problems with the testing that began yesterday. The first test that we give is the ELA Writing, ELA is English Language Arts. And the fourth through seventh graders are taking it in pencil paper, but the eighth through 10th graders are taking the test on computer. And so here's all kinds of problems, from logging in to they got logged in and they worked for an extended period of time, and then it all just went dark and went away, and browser issues, and bandwidth issues, and all of these were issues with the company. And so depending on the district and how they tested, it, it, well, it just created lots of problems, and this is just the beginning of our problems. We're doing writing now, we'll do, you know, reading and math, and everything else is coming. But I wanted you to be aware of what one superintendent actually took the time to put it in writing and send it to the commissioner. The other paper is a response from the commissioner about what she's trying to do, or the working that's happening with A.I.R., which is the company. And just so you know, we had similar problems here in Putnam County. We have our testing coordinator, Renee Lamro, who does a wonderful job every year for us. She worked with the testing coordinators and the principals, and what was determined yesterday is that we would start with just Palatka High's ninth graders to see how things go, since we have a number of days that we can do the testing. And they've had all the same problems yesterday that the rest of the state does, and that's stated here in, in Mr. Pond's letter to the commissioner. So just so that you're aware. However, today, we had a little more success. And again, today, we just tested ninth graders. Today, we tested ninth graders at Palatka High and Interlochen High. Interlochen High School was actually able to complete 175 out of 226, so that was good. They all, they got it done, and they were successful. Palatka High completed 257 students out of 385, so we've had some success. So tomorrow, we're going to add Crescent City High and Q.I. Roberts with their ninth graders, and Palatka High School feels so good, they want to try to start with their 10th graders. 10th graders we worry about, because that is the grade level that this test, along with the reading and the math, will count towards graduation. They have to pass everything.
Okay, Madam Superintendent, may I ask a quick question? I get all the glitches in that, but our kids will not be penalized for glitches technologically, correct?
I certainly hope not, but we have no real response on that yet. And here's, here's the real question.
That can't be, that just can't.
Well, our suggestion as superintendents is that this year, that these tests be used strictly for data, and not be used and held against the students or the teachers. That's still in the legislature. We don't know until the end of session what they're going to do with testing. We just have to hope and pray, and then you all can contact your legislators and put in a good word.
We'll be there next week.
Here's the issue with this test that was brought up to the commissioner yesterday, and she had no answer for it. These ninth graders taking this test, whether they got to take it yesterday and complete it, or whether they just got started on it, or whether they didn't even actually get into it, they've seen the prompt, they know what it is. And they all have 10th grade friends and 8th grade friends who haven't yet taken the test that I'm sure they're sharing it with. So as far as I'm concerned, the test is compromised, and the validity no longer exists.
Well, that's why I wouldn't want to use this as a baseline. Now, it could be whatever, but if you use it as a baseline, and what you just said is going on, is going on.
Well, it's, it wouldn't be good for a baseline either, but I'd rather they use it as a baseline than actually use it against, I say against the students, give them a grade and a score for it when it's really not valid. I don't think they deserve to get some kind of grade or score. But that's my personal opinion, and we do what the, what the Department of Education tells us, and they do what the legislature tells them, and so it's kind of just passed down to us, and we, we don't know where this is going. So I just wanted to make sure that you have this information, and as we move along through testing, we will keep you updated as to how it's going, because it's, again, the first year that we're doing this on the computer. And I still say they're testing the children's computer skills, not their knowledge, but anyway, a lot of arguments there that we've already presented as a superintendent's association to the commissioner and to our legislators. What they do with it during this session remains to be seen. So maybe just something you want to keep in mind as you all go to Tallahassee and as you talk to legislators, I just really want you to think about that. It's, it's going to cause problems no matter how we look at it. Testing children and evaluating them is important, because we need to know where they are, what they've learned, what they still need to learn, and how we need to, to present our instruction. But to hold these, this type of testing, particularly this year, to a particular standard for students, and then also to judge our teachers on it, is just not something I think is fair to anybody. And again, those, those feelings have been expressed to the commissioner, who, by the way, does not agree with that, and to our legislators. And legislators, thank goodness, are, are finally hearing from lots of parents. That makes the difference. And so they may make some changes. Now, the governor did suspend, or do away with, the 11th grade English Language Arts test, which really was kind of a moot point. It's kind of silly, they have to pass the 10th grade English reading, math, to graduate. So why give 11th graders a test that they are smart enough to know, well, I already passed it in 10th grade, so I'm going to graduate, so this test really doesn't mean anything. So they did away with a test that didn't matter a whole lot, anyway. So I don't know that that's going to help us a lot with, with our testing situation, but we'll see what they decide to do this year, anyway. So moving on, certainly Friday's send-off of A-Battery, the first 265th, was exciting and sad. It's sad that we have to send good people into a situation in Afghanistan that's going to be very dangerous. So certainly, they need our thoughts and prayers with them as they take that step. The fact that they are willing to do that says a lot about them and their character, and we certainly want to support them. And I have to say that when I asked the schools if they had students that would like to participate, I got an overwhelming response, and really couldn't use everybody, we didn't have time. But we had students from Miller Intermediate, Mosley Elementary, Q.I. Roberts, Interlochen High, Palatka High, Crescent City High, Overturf Sixth Grade Center, Kelly Smith, just on and on and on, that either made a speech presentation or provided music. We also had Melon Elementary's principal, Tammy Driggers, who did the national anthem a cappella. She did a great job. At the end of the program, Sandy Hurst, who is a counselor at Jenkins Middle, and also Andrea Wells, who is the band director at Jenkins, did God Bless America to end the program, and did an outstanding job. We just had such support from our schools. We have wonderful people, creative students, amazing teachers, all throughout our school system. And they really came on Friday, and they, they just, they, they shined. And it really, though, is not about us. It doesn't matter who did it, the fact is that it was done to honor these men and women, and they were made to feel supported. That was the important thing, that we are going to support them and not forget them as they leave. And James A. Long Elementary has a teacher that every year spends time with her students doing the little shoeboxes with all kinds of goodies in them, and getting them to our military men, and now they have a whole unit they can concentrate on. And that's very exciting. So we'll keep you updated in the things that we do for particularly this unit as they are sent to Afghanistan. They have a little more training to do, they will not be back to Putnam County, they go to training, I think in Oklahoma, or possibly Kentucky, one of two places, and then they go to Afghanistan in June. So they will not be back to Putnam County until after the 400 or so days that they spend in Afghanistan. So we'll give you updates from time to time, and we just want to keep you informed as to what's going on. And I think, oh, Rhonda, I was going to ask you to talk a little bit about the money that the Florida School Recognition Awards, and I have the email here if you'd like it. I think it's really exciting. You sent this out earlier, and the amount of money that's coming to Putnam County because of these awards that were made to our schools. And I have it if you want the bigger version, but you can look at it on your phone.
Yeah, I brought it up.
And all the schools that were involved, I just thought you might like to present this, this is very exciting.
Sure. And the schools have been emailing steadily now for several weeks, wanting to know, you know, as soon as we had word, because they all had to have their meetings by February the first in order to determine how they plan to spend this money. And the, we were, they were able to award the full $100 per FTE. They had to wait till all the grades and all the appeals had been done to determine first. And I'll give you a breakdown of who all received funding and how much. As, the district as a whole received $347,834. C.L. Overturf received $36,950. The Children's Reading Center received $21,365. The Academy of Arts and Sciences received $14,573. Price Middle School received $57,959. Melrose Elementary received $37,448. James A. Long Elementary received $58,840. Crescent City Junior/Senior High School received $80,242. And Mosley received $40,457. And they can, they take a vote, and they can determine to give it out as salary, as stipends for current staff, anybody at the school that their committee votes on. They can set some of the money aside for student rewards or for equipment. So they meet together, and they come up with a plan, and they, now that we, that money actually came in today, the same day the memo came in. So I sent out the email this morning and told them, as soon as they will now provide me with that plan and their list of names and award amounts, that we will get payroll to take this on and get the money distributed out to the staff.
Who, who votes on that, Rhonda?
It's, it's the staff currently at the school, as well as the school advisory committee. And they have to reach an agreement, and if they can't reach an agreement by February 1st, the money has to be divided equally only among the classroom teachers that are currently there. Because they can vote, since this was earned for work that was done last year, they can vote to give it to people that are no longer at the school if they were there the year before. But all of, all of the schools came up with a plan.
So it's primarily a supplement income for them?
Yes, that's correct. And most of them do set aside a small amount for student awards and everything.
Thank you.
But that's exciting. What was that total again, Rhonda, 300 and? Came to Putnam County, that's great. Great work by our schools.
Because there was some of the, some districts and schools appealed if they didn't receive the grade that they thought they were going to receive, so they had to wait till all the appeals were finalized, and then they sent the money.
And that's all I have today.
Any other business to come before this board, if not, meeting is done. Thank you, everyone.
See you guys.
Bye.
Bye.